I would like to introduce Deanna Leedy from my office, who will be giving the overview of the Department of Corrections FY 2024 budget.
Good afternoon. The proposed fiscal year 24 budget for the Department of Corrections totals $52 million, an increase of 2.7 million or 5.5% over the fiscal year 2023 budget. As you can see on page two of the analysis, the largest portion of the department's budget, the general fund budget, totals $51 million, an increase by 3.7 million or 7.9%. And this is primarily due to salary enhancements and additional overtime compensation due to the new Pittman fixed shift schedule, as well as increases in contract costs for medical and food services. The special fund portion of the budget totals 1.1 million and decreased by $1 million or approximately 49.2%. And this is primarily due to some year-to-year variability in the budgeting of commissary account funds. On page three, the exhibit displays the department's budget history, as well as the general fund reversions. The Office of Budget and Finance estimated a fiscal year 2023 general fund fund reversion of 212,000, and that was as of April 19, 2023. However, a budget appropriation transfer totaling $600,000 for overtime due to vacancies and food service costs for an unanticipated increase in the inmate population is being requested for the approval at the June 5, 2023 legislative session. The pie charts show how the proposed funding will be allocated across programs and expenditures. The department's general fund program represents the largest program allocation, while personnel costs represent the largest category of expenditures. If you turn to page four, the analysis also notes that the budget includes considerable flexibility and the realm of salaries in light of the presently high level of turnover savings. Operating budget highlights, which also begins on page four, includes a discussion of personnel costs. On page six, we discuss other operating expenses. And on page seven, the new Pittman fixed shift schedule, which is a 12-hour shift schedule similar to what the county's emergency communication center utilizes. And on page eight, there is a short discussion of the department's commissary account. On page nine, we go into a bit more detail on the department's staffing challenges and initiatives. On page 11, we discuss inmate population and recidivism. And on page 12, we discuss the assisted treatment. Capital budget highlights begin on page 13. And at this time, I would like to turn it over for discussion.
Thank you so very, very much, Ms. Leedy. Any questions or comments from the members? Director Pesterfield?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Walt Pesterfield, Director of the Baltimore County Department of Corrections. It is my honor to sit here for you today to promote the corrections budget for FY 2024 as we support the county's estimate to be fiscally responsible to the citizens of Baltimore County. The Baltimore County Department of Corrections continues to feel the impact from the COVID-19 pandemic. Even three years later, we struggle with filling vacancies within our department. We must continue to explore creative efforts to retain our employees and improve on decreases, decreasing our vacancy rate, specifically within our correctional officer series. As part of these efforts, we have contracted with WJZ CBS Television, as well as WMAR ABC Television to bolster our recruitment efforts. We also are enhancing and expanding our internal human resource section, as well as support to billing operations, food service security, our legal department, K-9 unit, and quality control. These changes will enable our department to be more effective in several areas, thus improving our efficiency as a department. The requests set forth in our budget reflects the needs of our department and the many needs we have to further our efforts of safety and security within the detention center. I speak for everyone in the corrections department when I say that we are thankful for all the budget support and efforts that the council and county has provided to us as we request that the council fully support our budget proposal in order to provide our constituents exceptional and efficient service. As noted, we are taking aggressive efforts to turn around our vacancy rate because we know that it is a great concern and has made a considerable impact on our budget, especially in the area of overtime. In addition, we are continuing to make needed improvements in our facility building operations, physical plant, and cap projects that were desperately needed, such as our lock replacement, chiller replacement, kitchen upgrades of dishwasher's hot water tank. These needed replacements are a result of an aging facility, and we must address these in a timely manner. We appreciate your oversight and thank you for your continued guidance. This concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Pesterfield. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Pesterfield, for the presentation and for the budget analysis. I wanted to give you a chance to just update us and also relate to your budget, the internal report that you submitted to us and the members of the executive branch related to the juvenile detentions in our correctional facility, give us an update on that and how any changes related to that report have been reflected in the budget.
You cut out a little bit, but I believe that you're wanting a little bit of update on the juvenile clientele that we have, the inmate, and how that process is going. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, presently, I will start off, we are in talks trying to work out an MOU with the State of Maryland and the Youth Detention Center in Baltimore City. Those talks have gone very well so far. We anticipate being able to work out a process where the juveniles will come into our facility and then pending vacancies in the facility, be able to transport our inmates down to Baltimore City. As far as internal mechanisms that we've made improvements on, FRIA is a big part of institution, adult and juvenile, but especially on juvenile. And so we no longer have our juveniles in the intake area for quarantine. They are brought into the facility, seen by medical staff in that processing part, and brought directly up to the juvenile unit, where they are only with juveniles. We've made some upgrades in our facility housing itself, bring it to more of a juvenile atmosphere. We've also changed the placement of where school takes place instead of classrooms where there's more of a chance for the juveniles to see an adult and hear an adult. We have classroom, we've worked that out with Baltimore Public Schools to have class within our unit. So again, that unit very tight and minimizes any adult contact. Can I answer your question, sir?
It does. Thank you. And I appreciate you mentioning the MOU. So just for my information, if you do go into an MOU, that would then divert all juveniles that would be potentially going to our detention facility, to the one in Baltimore, so we wouldn't have any juveniles going to our detention center?
Well, ideally, yes. Ideally, yes. Their space historically has been pretty tight with the males, but you know, again, we're working it out where we could, there'd be a mechanism to take them down after they came to our facility and did an intake process. Females inmates are much easier because they have a ten-bed, three or four females, and they rarely have that full. In fact, when I went down and visited the facility a few weeks ago, they only had one female, and they historically have one to two, maybe three females. And that's our most difficult area to try to ensure that the females are not with adults based upon our structure here at the facility. So we feel very confident we will be able to place females very quickly pending this MOU down in the Baltimore City facility.
Thank you. When we were discussing earlier, when you've had conversations, I appreciate your openness, and when we've discussed issues with juvenile detention in our center, obviously, your staff shortages have been part of that. You've addressed that in your response. What tools do you have? And I know you're putting that into place now where you work at WBAO for commercials and things, let folks know that we're hiring. You don't have the same resources, I guess, that the police department has, where there's a cadet program, and I guess it's complicated to corrections. What other resources do you have, or could you have, that other agencies where you come from, you've seen to try and inform folks early on of the potential and benefits of working for the corrections department?
Presently, and over the last, about starting at the mid to the end of February, we compiled a recruitment team with Captain Zahn kind of heading that team. And since then, we've been doing two to three job fairs or employment contact type contacts each week. Today, they're actually at FedEx Field, a military job fair. And then on Thursday, they'll be at Fort Meade again to tap into our military men and women in an effort to get those folks here, which historically for me and other facilities has been a very good positive thing, both with the military and us getting really good, solid employees. So we continue to do those efforts on the weekends. And during the week, those teams go out basically all over the state, even up into Del, or I'm sorry, PA. We're tapping into the York area of PA. We have road signs, the big giant road signs on 83, and then other advertisements that we're, again, aggressively recruiting and making sure that we're, our name is out there too, to bring people into our county.
Absolutely. And I mentioned this before and will future, if there's an opportunity to participate in a conversation related to veteran recruitment, I'd be happy to offer or be part of that conversation with you all and your staff. And also lastly, moving forward, happy to discuss with you in the future about the impacts of the prison population, the increased population recidivism on your day-to-day operations. So one, I can be knowledgeable, and also if any way that the council could be helpful with that, that we can be prepared to do something. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Young. Any additional questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Councilman Batoka.
Two quick questions, one question, one comment. Mr. Pesterfield, what is your current? I know that the juvenile population has fluctuated somewhat. What's the current juvenile population, both for males and females?
As of today, we are at 10. That was with an intake today. So we're at 10. A week ago, we were down to four. So that, like you said, sir, it does fluctuate. And at 10, it's a pretty good amount. We have zero females right now, and we have not had females for several weeks.
Okay, thank you. And the other comment I had was that I know that myself and many other council members still look forward to a tour of the facility. It's been difficult to schedule that because we have so many budget hearings right now, but it's still something that I can say that I'm interested in, and I think that other members are as well. So we'll be there soon at some point.
Absolutely. We welcome that, and I think it would be a good opportunity for the council to come in and see where the juveniles are and any other areas that you would like to see. So thank you.
You're welcome. Any additional questions or comments? I, Director Pesterfield, we certainly welcome you and think you're doing a pretty good job. But I have to tell you, you said something that stuck me in aside like a knife. I'm all over Baltimore County, and I have yet to see a billboard for the job in corrections. And so when you told me you were all up in Pennsylvania and Delaware and other places, it really stuck me in aside because I personally don't want to see any advertisement anywhere until we've covered every inch of Baltimore County. We have plenty of people here who need jobs. And right now, currently, a big chunk of our workforce don't even live in the state of Maryland. So that's not something I want to encourage. That's not something I want to double down on. I think we should be doing everything in our power to hire and give the opportunities to people who live here. So until you tell me, until I'm riding around seeing billboards on in Baltimore County, it bothers me to think that we're up in Pennsylvania.
Well, I apologize, sir. I sure don't want to put something in your side. And we will continue to advertise and make efforts, and we will give billboard, a big one here in Baltimore, maybe several.
Well, take the ones from Pennsylvania and Delaware and bring them back here.
Okay. It's only in Pennsylvania, not Delaware.
Okay. Well, Pennsylvania, same difference. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Director Pesterfield, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you, sir.
Lauren, take it away.
Okay. I would like to introduce Marie Jang from my office, who will be giving the overview of the insurance contribution FY 24 budget.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the council. The proposed fiscal year 2024 general fund budget for the insurance contributions program totals $189.8 million, an increase of $26.8 million or 16.4% over the fiscal year 2023 appropriation. The increase is primarily attributable to additional funding for OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits for county retirees and liability insurance. The county's OPEB contribution includes an additional $15 million above the funding level recommended by the consultant, which qualifies as an exclusion from the spending affordability committee's compliance calculation. In addition to funding the OPEB expense, 45% of this budget is planned for health insurance for active employees. On page three, you will see the budget history of the program and the composition of the proposed budget. Here you can see that the county's employer contributions for OPEB in Burgundy have been increasing in recent years, while employer contributions for active employee health insurance, shown in blue, have been steady. Contributions for liability insurance in green are somewhat higher. On page four, the analysis provides the fiscal year 2024 budget highlights. And beginning on page five are the topics related to these budget highlights, including OPEB funding, the county's contribution for general government active play health insurance, and general government funding for liability claims. As page four of the analysis indicates, no potential reductions or transfers have been identified this year. At this time, I will turn things over to you for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Let me see, who are we going to have with the insurance?
It's me, Mr. Chairman, it's Kevin Reed.
Oh, I don't see you, Kevin.
Oh, can you guys hear me?
Oh, there you are. There you are. All right. There you go. Thank you. I didn't see you. I was looking for you and didn't see you, so I was a little confused.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon. Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss our insurance budget. I wanted to just introduce a few people on the call. Deputy Director Matthew Carpenter is with us, our health insurance administrator Becky Ellis, and our longtime healthcare consultant, Mr. Mark Lynn from Bolton Partners, as well as I have our county attorney, James Benjamin, on the panel, who can speak to the county's claims management unit. This budget funds our self-insurance programs, which include our property insurance, liability, and workers' comp funding, and of course, our health insurance programs. And we also fund two internal service funds, one for our active health claims and one for our liability program for workers' comp, auto, and general liability. And we also manage the other post-employment or OPEB trust. And it looks like the auditors have three main topics for discussion, which I am happy to walk through. And I'd like to say that we are excited that we see no recommended cuts. And of course, we always respectfully agree with that as well. So our first section, beginning on page five, deals with our OPEB funding and retiree healthcare. And we're talking about our contribution levels. And I think we have a really good story to tell here because this administration has been fully committed to addressing the costs of retiree benefits both in two ways. One is continually reviewing plan options and offerings in relation to costs. And two, we've been on an aggressive ramping up of OPEB contributions. And this has been demonstrated with our FY 24 proposed contribution of $119 million to this trust, which is $15 million more dollars over the recommendation by our actuaries. This also, we wanted to thank the spending affordability committee for allowing us this additional funding to bolster the stability in this trust for our retirees, and we hopefully look forward to this ability in the future as well. So labor first is our Medicare exchange, which has now been rebranded retiree first. So if you see that name, that is what that refers to. And you know, this move over three years ago has resulted in more choice for our retirees and enhanced customer service, and even better, has offered plans at a reduced cost to both members in our systems. With this plan fully implemented, the current funding status of our OPEB trust is estimated to be about around 12%, which is up from an estimated 7% had we not moved to offer these fully insured plans. And as reported by Bolton, in total, the FY 24 estimated benefit payments for all units, which is BCPS, general government, CCBC, will be $117 million. So that's our estimated payment. Prior to retiree first engagement, that figure was $131 million. So that is a $14 million or 11% reduction to our expected benefit payments out of the OPEB trust in FY 24. So this results in tens of millions of dollars in savings over the years. And I'm very, very, very excited to report that for the first time in many years, with this FY 24 budget, the $119 million contribution, we will finally be putting more money into the trust than what we project to come out next year. And that is two years earlier than we had initially planned. So that was one of our goals, and we're very excited to meet that goal on time, actually before. And another positive note for future, that the auditors reference is the contributions to the plan stabilize really from FY 27 to FY 28 to a more manageable $5 million increase per year after this pay-go amount is met. And we'll do a full evaluation next year to find out exactly where we are. The second question deals with how our OPEB plan compares to other jurisdictions. And OPEB plans vary widely around the country and even in Maryland. And if we look at publicly available data that Bolton has provided us, that's not necessarily current. It's about two years old. We can look at funding percentages as divided by assets, dividing assets by the OPEB liability. And again, we're approximately at 12% funded. But if we look at other Baltimore metro areas, we have the following. Interundial County was funded at about 24%. Baltimore City was about at 31%. Howard County is at 10%. Montgomery County is 36%, and Prince George is 3. And when you look at other areas that, other jurisdictions that have made drastic changes, Harford County closed its plan to new hirees, except for the sheriff's department in 2010. And they closed the plan to civilian employees from sheriffs in 2019. Employees now get a defined contribution plan. Charles County has closed the OPEB plan to all employees hired after 2016. And again, those employees get a defined contribution or set amount. The city of Chesapeake, Virginia eliminated all post-65 coverage in 2016, and that included retirees who are already receiving a benefit. So we were constantly mindful of the cost, but we have a commitment, as demonstrated with this budget, to continue funding this liability and moving on. The second section deals with active healthcare and talks about our trend in insurance costs and whether our employer contributions will begin rising after two consecutive years of decline. So when Bolton sets the rates for Baltimore County, like many other jurisdictions, the rates for active employees and pre-Medicare retirees are the same. And Bolton uses the most recent two years of claims and enrollment data as the base period. And we offset the drug claims by the prescription rebates. And claims net of rebates are projected forward with the renewal period using a 5% annual healthcare trend. And if benefit changes have been made historically or plan to be made in the upcoming year, claims are adjusted to reflect the benefits for their renewal period. Other fixed costs, such as admin and stop-loss fees, are added to the projected claims. And total costs are compared to the premium generated by the current rates, which is then multiplied by the employee, employment, enrollment, I'm sorry, to arrive at a rate percentage. And as the, we have no co-pay changes in store for calendar year 2024. And we're looking at estimated increases to our rate equivalent of about 4.63 for OAP and OAPAN plans. Those are the fully insured medical plans. I'm sorry, self-insured medical plans. Our fully insured Kaiser Plan, we're looking at a 5% increase, and Vision and Dental, a 0% increase. As the auditors note, our employer contribution for FY 24 decreases by approximately $2 million. And this is due to the fact that overall enrollment in our health plans has decreased from about 5,118 employees to 4,926. And that's a difference of about 192 employees. So these, again, we have a lot of separations. We have a lot of retirements coming up. You know, at $10,000 per employee in savings to the county, that reduction does make sense. So that's where we stand. It really is the inflows and outflows of people coming out of our plan. And finally, the last question deals with our funding for liability claims and talks about our decision to move to a risk margin that funds, that moves us to a 75% confidence level. Our goal is not to move 100% to, or to that 75%, but in light of increasing claim costs in our liability fund, the FY 24 contribution level is going to increase beyond the minimum required by our actuary, which is basically the estimated total loss times our discount rate. So that was about $6.7 million. When we move closer to the 75% risk margin, what this basically says is that with all things being equal, in 75% of cases, 24.6 million would be needed to fund our general liability program. We funded $11 million in FY 23, and our loss experience was a little bit higher than that. And we project to be, or estimate to be, a little higher than that. So in light of that, we in the Office of Law feel that the 13.6 million appropriation for 24 is a prudent move and gets us closer between the minimum and the 75% risk margin. And I will note that this is factored into our spending affordability guidelines, so we do not get an exclusion. We consider this an ongoing cost. And I believe the last question regarding liability deals with future efforts to minimize claims. And if I can, Mr. Chair, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Benjamin to answer.
Okay, great. Mr. Benjamin?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Kevin. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. The Office of Law's Claims Management Unit, it reviews claims that come in. And if there's a claim that looks like it's something that could have been prevented, or there is a risk analysis done that shows a significant persistent problem or threat to bodily harm or injury, the unit will work with the agencies to put protocols in place in order to try to prevent further claims of similar nature. Also, if the unit is seeing trends in how auto access, for instance, are occurring, it would also do analysis and work with the agency as to address further risk management. So working hard to try to minimize these claims. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Were you done?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Sure. What, I guess I have one question. What department represents the largest payout in terms of risk, in terms of claims?
I think, I think that as I look at last... I think, I think that as I look at last just the year, so since I've been here with the, kind of, I would say that the police department has had significant claims that we've had to pay either through settlements or judgments, both through settlements.
All right. I thank you and I'm hopeful that some of the steps and actions the new chief will take will help mitigate that. I understand it's substantial. Was it to the tune of like 13 million last year or something?
That's correct, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Any additional questions or comments? Okay. Well, I thank you so very, very much for your time. As always, it's good to see you as well as you, Director Reed. And now I guess we'll move on to the library. Lauren?
Okay.
Sure. Thank you, sir.
I would like to introduce Zachary Amet from my office, who will be giving the overview for the FY twenty four budget for the library.
The proposed FY twenty twenty four budget for the Department of Libraries totals 49.6 million, an increase of 3.5 million or 7.6% over the FY twenty twenty three budget. As you can see on pages one and two, the general fund portion of the budget, which reflects county government's contribution to BCL's budget totals 41 million and increased by 2.9 million or 7.7% to the personnel expenses. For FY twenty twenty four, counties supporting 13 net new positions, including four positions previously funded by BCL surplus balance, new salary scale, which took effect during FY twenty twenty three, as well as two upcoming 2% colas and fringe costs, primarily medical insurance and FICA. The special fund portion of the budget totals 8.6 million and increases by 548,000 or 6.8% reflects the planned use of additional one-time funding, including 397,000 in county awarded ARPA grant support to employ social workers at two branches. And unspecified usage of an anticipated $200,000 estate gift. State aid to BCL reflects slight increase of approximately 113,000 or 1.5% for FY twenty twenty four. On page three, exhibit displays the department's budget history. The pie chart shows how close funding will be allocated across programming expenditures, with circulation information services representing the largest program allocation. Personnel costs represent the largest category of expenditures. On page four, the analysis notes new county-supported budget items and cautions that the BCL's current vacancy rate in turnover level are lower than budget assumes. Operating budget highlights also begin on page four include personnel expenses and other operating expenses. Additional topics for discussion begin on page six includes staffing initiatives and challenges, Sunday service, New Americans Outreach Specialists, continuing initiatives and mobile services. Capital budget highlights begin on page 10. At this time, I'd like to turn it over for discussion.
Thank you very much. That. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Well, we'll turn to Director, Ms. Sonia Alcantara-Antone.
Thank you. And good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the council. I'm here with Helen Rao, who is our Director of Fiscal Services, Maureen Walsh David, who is the President of the Board of Library Trustees, and Yara Sheikh, who is the incoming President of the Board of Library Trustees. Libraries are integral to the quality of life for any community. Public libraries impact the health and wealth of your constituents. We level the playing field by providing access to the resources that people need to be successful in schoolwork and in life. For example, we went fine free over a year ago and that has had a tremendous impact on our community. We saw immediately that a third of those cards that were previously blocked, all of a sudden got reactivated again and people started using their public library and taking advantage of the resources that are available to them via Baltimore County Public Library. Baltimore County Public Library is a safe and trusted space that connects the most vulnerable amongst us with the resources and services that they need to thrive and survive. Our social worker initiative and our mobile library law center initiative continue to be very popular and well-used. We meet people where they are. Our four mobile units help us to connect with people who may be physically distant from one of our branches. And we, we've got four very busy mobile units that are out on the road constantly and we look forward to upgrading one of our older vehicles with a brand new stream vehicle, which is currently being built and will be arriving in February of twenty four. And we're really excited about that. We are actively working to eliminate digital inequity in Baltimore County. Our long-term lending program for Chromebooks and Wi-Fi routers helps to bridge the digital divide and ensure that our residents have the access to the resources that they need for work in school. And we support lifelong learning and critical thinking that's necessary for a healthy and vibrant democracy. At the library, you have access to a world of ideas and you can make up your own mind about what to think. And we provide access to those resources. And lastly, libraries are community connectors. We bring people together from all walks of life. And we provide safe spaces and community spaces for people to gather. You cannot have a great community without a well-resourced and great public library system, and the two are not mutually exclusive. The ongoing vision for us here at BCL is that we are serving our community with an equity lens and that we are providing meaningful resources and transformative services at the library that will lead to a more inclusive and connected community. We do a lot to serve the community. However, there's always opportunities for us to extend our reach to serve the underserved in the community. One of the things that we're going to be doing this upcoming year is we are, we are in the process of recruiting for a New Americans Outreach Specialist. And their job is to connect with all of the new Americans that we know are in the community, but may not be used in the library because usually they don't have a tradition of a public library in their country of origin. So this, this person's job is to connect with those folks and bring them to the library, but also to help inform our services and programs so that we are being more inclusive to, to those folks in our community. Ongoing priorities for Baltimore County Public Library include investing in our workforce, eliminating barriers to access, expanding our social workers at the library program. We're at two and we are just in the process of recruiting for our final two social workers. Attracting a more diverse staff that looks like the community that we serve. Mobile outreach and meeting people where they are, eradicating digital inequity and making sure that we have 21st century library facilities to serve our community. And all of these priorities are reflected in our FY twenty four budget. Some highlights, personnel expenses are probably, is probably, is the biggest category in terms of expenditures in our budget. Recruitment and retention remain strong here at BCL. A big success for us was that we implemented a new pay scale, a new salary scale on January 1st of twenty three, that also included a 3% cola. It was informed by a classification and compensation study that we had done the year prior. Maryland is a closely knit library community and we find that we are often competing with other library systems in addition to other industries for the same high-quality workers. So having a competitive salary structure is key to our ability to attract and retain the best talent for BCL and to grow the organization strategically. And now with the new pay scale, all of our staff are now eligible for merit increases due to the fact that we updated all of our steps. And a big success for us with this pay scale is that we met and exceeded the state's minimum wage requirement well in advance of the expected date. And lastly, we merged all for, full-time and part-time staff onto one scale. And that's to ensure more equity in terms of how we are compensating our employees. And with the new pay scale, we had the opportunity to examine the type of work and the positions that we needed for a 21st century public library system. We changed the number of authorized positions in FY twenty three was at 594 and in FY twenty four, it's at 554. And what we did there is we took a step back and we identified what is a type of work that needs to happen in the libraries, who needs to do it, what are the skills that are needed? And we, we converted many of our part-time hours and created new full-time opportunities. And this is really important because we did this very strategically, very thoughtfully. We did not request, you know, dozens of new positions from the county. We took advantage of the generous personnel dollars that we already received from the county and figured out the best way to expend them moving forward. And we were able to create some new positions over this past year. I mentioned the New Americans Outreach Specialist is one. Our Employee Labor and Relations Officer is another. And that's really just using, utilizing the dollars that we already had available to us. Let's see, in FY twenty four, we look forward to reopening on Sundays. We're going to be opening seven branches and we're going to be concentrating on the school year, which is when we typically are the busiest during, on Sundays. And the seven branches that we've identified are, are the branches where we tend to be the busiest on Sundays. And we just wanted to concentrate our, our Sunday service towards the communities that, that utilize Sunday hours the most. And another highlight is we have a number of capital-related projects in the, in the pipeline. Right now, Catonsville is closed for renovation. And if you go onto our website, you can see some photos from the interior of Catonsville where they've completely gutted the building and it, it looks amazing. And so we're really excited to, to follow that progress and we expect that Catonsville will be reopening in late spring of twenty four. And that while that, while that is going on, Woodlawn is currently undergoing a design study. Thankfully, because of the generosity of the county executive, we have $22 million committed towards the Woodlawn project. And we're really excited about creating dedicated spaces for teens at the library where they can learn and collaborate without feeling like they are being displaced or making others feel uncomfortable. And I'll note that we typically get up to 200 teens every day after school at Woodlawn Library. So this is really an opportunity to do something transformative for them. When Woodlawn is ready to close for renovation, that'll be right around the time that Catonsville is coming back online. And that's important because both of those branches neighbor each other. We were able to get $12 million from the state this year for Lansdowne Library and a brand-new Lansdowne Library. And the county has committed to, to matching those funds. That library is too small per state guidelines. It's at 5,000 square feet. So we're looking forward to expanding it to a size that's more appropriate to serve that community. We also got some money, $3 million from Randalls Town, for Randalls Town to support a study where we can identify what, what, what role that library can play in the Liberty Road corridor visualization that's happening right there in Randalls Town. And we're really excited about possibly having the library be an anchor for the transformation that's to come. So we look forward to a design study in twenty four. And lastly, Essex Library, we also got $6 million from the county for that. We're looking forward to taking it out of the shopping center where it is and embedding it in a community that's walkable and near a school, so accessible to children and families. And so we're looking forward to some land acquisition this year and a design study to launch next year. So those were the highlights. Helen Rao and I are happy to answer any questions that you might have. I thank, I thank the council for all of your support for BCL and I respectfully ask that you support our budget request.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much. No questions, but two things. I want to commend you for the passport services you provide. I happen to need to go for a passport with my daughter at White Marsh and I thought it was extremely efficient. And it's very popular because it takes a while to make an appointment, but it's an example of what you talk about in terms of making libraries community hubs. And I just want to compliment you on that. Also, could you mention the work of the foundation for BCL? I was on that board for many years and I know they do wonderful work supplementing our activities. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Yes, our passport services are really popular and we're so pleased to be able to offer that. To speak to your question, our foundation is, is just wonderful. They have been doing so much to support the library. They, they raise money through, they, they apply for grants. They, they, they have a whole network of supporters who donate money to the library. Thankfully, we were able to, in our FY twenty three budget, we were able to get funding and support for a new position. It's called our Director of Philanthropy and Partnerships and we just hired one. She just started last Monday. So she's, so she's brand spanking new, but her job is to be the Executive Director of the foundation and to guide fundraising moving forward, but also to, to take us to the next level. There is a lot of low-hanging fruit, but then there's also a lot of untapped donors, corporate donors, et cetera, that, that we, that we can explore. And so we're really looking to be able to, to raise money, more money for, for the library system.
Great. Thank you for all your good work.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Batoka and then you, Ms. Rogers.
Just want to thank Director Alcantara-Antoine for the Sunday service in the Pikeville Library. It's sorely needed as you know, Director, that, that community uses Sunday library activities pretty frequently and pretty regularly. So just a note of thanks and appreciate you having that in the budget, not only for Pikeville Library, but for other libraries that might have Sunday activities. So thanks. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Batoka. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just wanted to add that I have had the honor and pleasure of spending time with CEO Alcantara-Antoine. We went on a field trip to the Richmond, Virginia area to visit some libraries to look at how library, 21st century libraries can be developed and built and utilized by the community. And I must say to you, I was just blown away in terms of what libraries really can be and how they can be utilized as a part of communities in, in such a way that you can't even imagine unless you see them. So we are very, very fortunate that CEO Alcantara-Antoine has come to our library system and look forward to what the vision of our new libraries that are being developed can be. Rice's Town Library was renovated and it is absolutely gorgeous. But there are some pieces that you, you wouldn't even imagine. I mean, these libraries look incredible and take on the, 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 the community influence where they are. They're, they're different, but they take on the community influence. So Ms. Alcantara-Antoine, thank you for taking me with you because I didn't have a concept of 21st century libraries. And we're looking forward to what our libraries can be like under your leadership. So thank you in advance and for exposing me to just absolutely beautiful libraries.
Okay. And CEO for saying that. Our goal is to recreate some of those types of libraries and those experiences right here in Baltimore County.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. Director, Director Alcantara-Antoine, I wanted to commend you and well, just you and your staff for the establishment of your New Americans Outreach Specialist. And wanted to just give you a chance to maybe help us understand too, some of the, what your expectations are over the next 12 months and how you might see with the county executives, New Americans Healthcare Access Task Force, how they might be able to collaborate together in meeting the needs of our, well, our new American residents that are moving into Baltimore County.
Thank you, Councilman Young. That's a great question. I'll answer the, the last part first. So the expectation of this position is that they are collaborating with the county. We're not in a silo by ourselves doing our own thing. We are very much integrated into what the county is doing. Even though technically we're not a county department, we do see the county as a partner and as an ally and a force multiplier so that, and we're all on the same page here. We're all, we're all playing for the same team. We're all aiming for the same goal. So the goal is for us to be able to work with the county. Excuse me, I need to grab a sip of water. Sorry about that. Allergy season is no joke. So the first part of the question is what is, what is this role expected to do? So one of the things is we really do need to So one of the things is we really do need to expand our collection. And, and, and have more foreign languages represented in our collection, in our marketing, for example. And we don't, we don't do that. So we need this person to advise us what that looks like. We also need help with recruitment. We do not have a lot of foreign language speakers here on staff. We have a handful, including myself, but that's just really not enough to really serve the needs of the community. So the goal is that this position will be able to assist us in those recruitment efforts that we're attracting people. Who can speak multiple languages and who look like the community that we're serving. So that we can offer better service and assistance to, to our community. And lastly, just to inform on, on all of our programs that we offer. We, we pretty much offer the line share, the, the, the programs that we offer are really for an English speaking audience. How do we go beyond that? And how do we offer programs that are relevant and meaningful to, to the community that we're serving? So that in a nutshell is what this position is going to be expected to do.
I appreciate that answer and look forward to, one, you know, seeing as it grows over the, this, next year and the years, years after. And one more question and, but all, all prefaced of saying that you don't have to answer now. It actually just came to. Came to me while we were speaking. I thank you for the work and capital projects that are going on in Southwest Baltimore County. A lot of the libraries you mentioned are all in my district. But I, I just wanted to make sure that I brought it to your attention and we can discuss it afterwards with your staff too. I had some handicapped members in my community in District One. When Catonsville closed down, they were reaching out to me asking about the renovations. And specifically about the elevator. The elevator is about as old as the library itself from the seventies or sixties. And they were, they said they were trying to find out if they were going to replace the elevator. I didn't have an answer since you were here. I thought I would just bring it up and happy to, you know, not, I don't want to put you on the spot or anything. I just wanted to make sure that if we're doing the renovations, that we're also looking at the elevator as well because it came from some constituents of the district about concerns. So that's a question, but also not that you have to answer now.
Yeah, and I see Deb Schundels on the phone. I don't know if the elevator is being replaced, but perhaps you can speak a little bit more to that.
Yes, the elevator is being upgraded as part of this process.
Excellent. I appreciate it. Make sure I get the word out to my community members as well. And if there's any other opportunity that I can have to help promote the programs that are going, going around the district, please feel free to let me know and thank you for being a good partner.
Thank you, Councilman Young. Any additional questions or comments? I, Director Alcantara-Antoine, I have a complaint I would like to make. So I was just thinking to myself how important the library is to our communities. And all the services that you provide. And I was thinking about the name library itself and I'm waiting for a day and this is my complaint. I guess looked it up online. It says a building or room containing collections of books, periodicals. And sometimes firms recorded music for people to read, borrow. And I was thinking to myself, that definition is so out of touch with what our libraries are to our communities today. Number one, they never even mentioned computers. They never mentioned borrowing computers in hotspots. And, you know, I guess wanted to say that. I, I'm assuming we will guess simply change the name, the definition of library and stick with the name. We'll guess change the definition, but clearly what you do is extremely important to our community, more like a community hub. And I'm going to congratulate you and your staff. I know that last year we had a lot of questions. There was a lot of employee relations issues. There was a lot of issues around pay and full-time versus part-time. And whether or not we were being fair to the employees. And my phone has stopped ringing and I'm looking at all the things you're doing. So I'm taking it that things are going, going much better. But clearly you have led the library in a very meaningful way that have made significant changes. I remember when we were first introduced utilizing students ID badges. To double as a library card. I remember all the computers, all the changes we've been making and all the changes you continue to make. And I'm guess listening to some of the improvements or some of the highlights that you mentioned here today. And I guess wanted to guess, take an opportunity to thank you for your leadership and to thank your team and the library board. The foundation for all of their hard work and dedication to the citizens of Baltimore County. It does not go unnoticed. And I look forward to you expanding the service to Sunday, you know, helping off a lot of people. So thank you very, very much. Any additional questions or comments from any of my members before we adjourn? All right. Well, thank you very much. God bless you, everyone. Be careful. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, council members. See you in a bit.
All right.